...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steem.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Just getting on.
Jason?
Councilmember Baskin? Welcome back to you. Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is, we need a motion for adoption of the agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Plus he did. Can we have a first and a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item two is a motion approving the minutes from November 2nd, 2020. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number three is under recognition and awards is community, Austin Community Understanding. Bonnie, are you out there? Bonnie Reed is going to be presenting this, I believe. Bonnie?
I just, can you hear me, Mayor?
I can, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I always, I forget to unmute in, with, using this Zoom. Oh my gosh, this is the first time that I've presented to council on Zoom. This is crazy. But, good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you for letting us talk to you about the Austin Community Understanding. I will explain the history of this understanding. Jeff, Chair of the Hormel Foundation, will talk about the inspiration for it. And Nataya, Mauer County Court Interpreter, Ervey, Director of the Welcome Center, and Karim from the United Way, will all give their thoughts about the understanding. At the end of July, following George Floyd's death and the ensuing protests and violence in different cities, the Hormel Foundation held two listening sessions with about thirty members of the community. The questions that we asked were, what has been your experience with law enforcement in our community? And are there any improvements that we can make? The second was, do you feel that Austin is a welcoming community? And what came before these sessions came the idea to have a community understanding. Chief McKeecon, she-
She muted herself.
Bonnie, you're breaking up real bad.
She muted herself.
You might have muted yourself.
Unmuted, sorry. Please excuse me, I pushed a key on the, on the computer. Chief McKeecon, Sheriff Sandvik, the Hormel Foundation Board of Directors, and Apex Austin, all of had input into the understanding. So Jeff is going to discuss the inspiration for this understanding.
Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you for entertaining our proposal here today to the council. I mean, this is one outgrowth of these community listening sessions. You know, we looked at, obviously, these tragic events that occurred this summer. And looked at it, in part from the challenge that was faced by communities both big, in the case of Minneapolis, and small, in the case of Kenosha, Wisconsin, of having to deal with complex emotional issues in the heat of the moment. And we thought, as we had this great group assembled, that maybe it would be better to think, think it through in a calmer time and get some broad input. And so really, that's the background of the community understanding. It's based on the core principle that was important to our listening session participants of mutual respect. And we hope that it provides a common sense, balanced approach that can be embraced by our community. And ultimately, if, if the city is inclined to proceed with this, we would encourage it to be something that could be used statewide or even in other communities beyond the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Nataya?
Good evening, everyone. I am happy to share my thoughts. And just like Jeff mentioned, we as humans, we act sometimes not in our best behavior in the heat of the moment, both in our personal lives, in our professional lives sometimes. So we want to think ourselves as someone that we have had a mindful thought before we say or act in a particular way. I think that this is a demonstration, and it denotes being proactive and getting ahead of the curve, if you may, for any potential dissonance that might happen in the community. The lovely thing about Austin is that we are large enough to have a diversity that's rich. Even in this Zoom meeting, I can see faces that I recognize, everyone. And also, we're small enough to know each other by first name basis. Steve, Jason, Ervey, Bonnie, Obala, Karim. And so I, I, I want to support this community understanding, and I stand by it proudly. And just, I think it is a demonstration of a healthy community.
Thank you, Nataya. Ervey? I think I saw Ms. Ervey on the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, are you on mute now? So, good evening, everyone. I'm so delighted to be here and share my thoughts about this community understanding. So I think that this community understanding is important for the whole community. But it's also even more important for the minorities in Austin. Why? Because the word peace has a very deep meaning for many immigrants who flee their country of birth because of war, persecution, violence, abuse, and absence of freedom. I know that as an immigrant, we rarely give ourselves the opportunity to express loudly how grateful we are to live in Austin. But I can tell you that it means a lot for us to live in a community where there is no chaos and where we can wake up every day and go freely to work, to provide for our families. It means a lot for us to see our kids grow up in a peaceful environment and safe to go to school, make friends, and prepare their future. Like everyone, we saw what happened in other cities and have an idea of the fear, the tension, the anxiety created in people's lives, and we all share those dreadful feelings and don't want that happen here in Austin. It's why I strongly believe that adopting this community understanding would set up clearly expectation for both parties and show also the strong desire of Austin leaders to serve and maintain peace in the city. A very peaceful and well-balanced statement that are, that will happily be welcomed in the community and that I would like to advocate and stand for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ervey. And Karim?
Hello, everybody. My name is Karim with United Way. Or, I guess in this section, I guess right now I am a community member. But one of the, the things that I really like, so we, so through, during, a couple months ago, we were, we got together, it's a lot of people from the community, and talked about, you know, what was, what is it that we want to see in our community? And then last week, we, we went to Apex, where we talked to different community leaders as well and just kind of heard, you know, their feedback from, from this, you know, from this understanding of, of sort of what we want our community to, to be. And as we've been talking about it, as we've been gathering around, I've been saying just how happy I am that as a community, we are able to sit down together and be able to come up with some sort of resolution where everybody is feeling like they are being understood and they have that freedom and they have that support. And so that has been the, the thing that I've been taking away from all of these conversations, is how do we, you know, create an inclusive community? And I think this understanding provides that. Some of the notes that I have in regards to sort of my thoughts and feelings are that it allows, it's, this understanding provides transparency into sort of what is, you know, what is expected of the community, and as a community member, you feel supported. I've been, thankfully, I, I've been in a part of the council for a couple weeks, or maybe it was months, and sort of trying to be as engaging in the community as I can. And so as a, as a minority, as everybody was saying, it allows me to, to feel like I can contribute to my community when I am feeling, you know, when I, when I am feel, when I do feel supported. When it's not just one-sided, when it's, you know, both, you know, different sides of our communities can feel respected and can feel like they can speak up and they can feel like they are heard. And so that is one of the things that I heard, that, that, I'm sorry, that I like about this understanding, that it's inclusive, that it's transparent, that it's not just one-sided. And so those are sort of my thoughts on it. And again, I'm just very thankful that we are in a place where we can come together and sit down and talk and have this discussion. So I think any, you know, any type of understanding that we have within one another is, is very important.
Thank you, Karim. Thank you, all of you. And Mayor Tom and council, do you have any questions or comments for us?
I don't like to-
This is Laura Helly. I have a comment when you're ready.
Go ahead, Laura.
Send it back to Mayor.
Thank you.
Was that a good one, Laura?
So I want to applaud this effort. And I want to say, you know, and this is going to echo some of your comments that you've heard already. Austin is in a, a great position, especially compared to a lot of other communities, in that we have the foundation laid to have this conversation and to be proactive. I am in full support of this effort. I will say that I hope that this is step one in ongoing conversations. And I specifically think that there could be some improvements to this statement. Because we talked to, several people mentioned that it's a balanced statement. But I, this is not a new comment. I made it as part of Apex Austin as well. Protest, peaceful protest is inherently an unbalanced situation. It's inherently a situation where people with less power in the community are coming forward, asking to be heard by people with more power in the community. So I feel that the statement needs to be much stronger in support of peaceful protest. I also want to just very gently point out, and I gently point this out because Austin is a community that's strong enough in our diversity to keep growing. I want to gently point out that the people of color who have spoken at this meeting in favor of the statement work for agencies whose funding depends on the Hormel Foundation. So I don't know that this is the best situation to, to feel like we're getting candid feedback. Maybe that those people don't have anything on the negative side to say about the statement, but if they did, I'm not sure this is a situation that would be comfortable for them to do that. So I would love to see the statement evolve with a few more community partners so that it's not so heavy toward the Hormel Foundation. It's probably worth noting that I also work for an organization that, that depends on the Hormel Foundation for a lot of our funding. And so it's a risk for me to, to name that and say that I think that we can do better. But I felt that in the, the position that I'm in and the hats that I'm wearing, I needed to, to speak up on that and say, let's, let's, let's keep going on what we're doing for diversity inclusion in Austin, and let's keep holding ourselves to a higher standard. So I very much support the statement. I don't know if there's a plan to vote on it tonight, but I would vote in favor of it. But I also am calling for more action and refinement around it so that, so that it can fulfill the vision that was articulated, that it be truly a reflection of what our community, what our community believes and how we want to handle a situation should it happen in our community similar to, to those other cities that we saw earlier this year. So, thank you.
Anybody else in the council?
Yeah, I would just say, I'm fully supportive of the statement. And thank you to everybody for bringing it forward tonight, as well as the immense amount of work that's gone into it. I know that, you know, I think the best way for us to approach this is it's progress, not perfection. And I'm always a big fan of progress, and I think it's great that we're being proactive. I think that we are, it's great that we're positively affirming this is what we value in a maybe more emotionally centered moment than, you know, when we face controversy. And, you know, as with everything, I think where this will benefit us is hopefully we don't have an incident where we would need to lean on these. But if we do, we've had the opportunity to kind of proactively communicate what it is that we want our city to stand for. And I think that can be something that we all fall back on. So I think it's great progress moving in the right direction, and I really appreciate everybody putting it forward.
Anybody else?
If I could, Steve King, as part of the community conversation, at least one round of it, I recall, just to, to balance Laura's comments, that yeah, the faces that we see on the Zoom call tonight may be of those folks that are in organizations that are maybe just because they're easily accessible for the Zoom meeting. But what was happening on the community conversation, and Jeff and Bonnie can speak to it just to verify, what I saw was, there was some high school kids on there of diverse backgrounds. There was community members that I had no idea who these people were. So again, for tonight's, you know, I guess conversation about it, you have these folks that are easily accessible and can be on a Zoom call. But for the, the community conversations that went, went on all virtually, there was great diversity from, I think, people that, again, I didn't know of, and they were different ages, old and young. So if Jeff and Bonnie want to expound on that, that'd be great.
Anybody else?
Thank you for putting that out, Steve. Yes, we, we did, we, we really, we had, you know, Father Raoul was there and Melody Morham. And just, we, we, we thought of the community, thought of different areas. And, and had a, had a wide variety of people. Kristi Bachmann was there. Hema, Obala, Obala, he's on this meeting too.
And so Santino.
Yeah, and Santino, yeah. And so, yeah, Jeff, we didn't even think about that, did we? We, we just thought, you know, who's, who's really articulate? And, and so I apologize, I, I didn't even think of that when we, when we put our team together. But any other comments or anything that, that, that people have on it? If not, Mayor Tom, would this be brought forth into a work session? Or what would be a good next step for this?
Well, we can't vote on it tonight because it's under recognitions and awards. But, you know, I mean, we could discuss it at our next work session.
You know, I'm having trouble hearing you. Did you say that you would then take it forward to a, a work session?
We can take it forward to the next work session, yeah, if, if, you know, that's what council wants to do. Council, do you want to take this forward to a work session? Just raise your hands if you do. I got one, Laura, two, Steve, three, four. I think I got a majority there. Okay, we'll take it forward to the next work session, the next, in two weeks, first December meeting. And then, are you going to be there, Bonnie? Did you want to be there for it?
Um, pardon me, did you ask if, if we want to be there for it?
Yeah, you want to be there in support of it, or, I mean, I'm just saying, maybe you don't know now, but you're certainly welcome to Zoom in on us just like you are now.
Yeah, it'd be really nice if we could be there then, and if there are any questions and things, and, and any input that people have, that, that's just great. We really appreciate it. So thank you very much for listening to us and, and, and good luck with the rest of your meeting. Thanks.
We'll make sure you get to Zoom like for, for the work session next week, or two weeks.
December 7th, it's actually three weeks, I think.
We're having a meeting on Pearl Harbor Day?
I didn't agree with that.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
Apparently, December 7th. I want to thank everybody that came, that came by and zoomed in on this, and it's, it's a very important issue, I think. Austin, we're trying to stand apart from, from what most cities do and what most cities achieve. And I think because of a lot of people we have on Zoom here tonight, that's exactly what we've been doing as a city. And I want to thank you for it. And we'll discuss it at the next work session. Thank you. Thanks, Bonnie.
Thanks. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
If nothing, nothing else, we'll move on. Number four, is we need a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number, under petitions and requests, number five is a resolution accepting the results of the November 3rd, 2020 general elec, election, miscast.
Yes, the resolution before you has the results of the election. I think everyone knows. Congratulations to those candidates that made it. I'd also like to thank the election judges that came out and worked the long, hard day to serve the community in that capacity. So I would request that you adopt the resolution.
We'd also like to thank Ann. We know if anybody's at City Hall the month before the election, they see her running all over the place and working very hard on these elections, and I think they went very well. Thank you, Ann. Now we need a resolution. Number five.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin. Councilmember at large, Austin.
Jeff?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Six is a resolution setting a public hearing for December 21st, 2020, on the adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Dankert?
I just need a resolution to set a public hearing for December 21st, where we will have the presentation and adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan.
Need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a motion on authorizing the city recorder treasurer to sign an insurance waiver stating the city does not waive the statutory tort limits. Tom?
On an annual basis, we need to go through the insurance renewal process. And one of the requirements of the insurance company on the state statutes is for the city of Austin and any municipality, quite frankly, to determine whether or not they want to waive the statutory tort limits. City of Austin has chosen in the past, and we'd recommend in, for the 2021, to not waive the statutory limits, which would then limit the amount of payouts the city would have under the statutory limits to $500,000 for a single occurrence, or a million five for any single event with aggregate individuals hurt. Some cities do wa, do decide to waive the statutory tort limits because they might feel responsible for additional costs. But for the city of Austin and most cities, they do not waive the statutory tort limits. So we request such action.
Council, any questions or comments? If not, we need a motion for seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a resolution granting 2021 also liquor license, club on sale licenses, and wine on sale licenses. I think we just need a resolution. Does anybody have any questions? Need a resolution for eight?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Abstain.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero with one abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a motion appointing Chris Heichl to the Austin Mauer County Home Ownership Board. Term expiring 12/31/23. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten, reviewing an ordinance amending section four, dead, force, seven zero fencing ordinance. Holly?
Uh, Mayor and council members, this is written to basically address a portion of our ordinance that lack clarity. The, the clarifying the height of the requirement for open-type fences in front yards and adjacent areas to four feet. So, and that's basically been our practice. There's just some, yeah, just, just some needed additional language. So if an individual wanted to have a chain link for other open-type fences above four feet in a residential area, they would, it would require a fence appeal. Do you have any questions?
Any question? If there are no questions, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And we need a mo, motion, ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance? Need a, I don't know what-
Need an ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is reviewing an ordinance for a fire hydrant maintenance fee chief.
Mayor, council, as we discussed last work session, this fee would be a dollar per month for each sewer connection to help cover the expenses. Austin Utility charges us for the installation and maintenance of fire hydrants, as well as the expenses the fire department has each year for our portion of the maintenance of those fire hydrants.
Council, we have any questions, comments? If not, we need a motion for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just for the record, I'll reiterate the comment I had at the work session, that I still think this should be funded out of the general fund. I think that we had committed to a four percent tax levy, and this takes it to about five and a half because it's just a tax by a different name. And I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the concept of charging specific fees for core city services. I wouldn't want us to be in a situation where we were charging, you know, for people dialing 911 to come to their house. But I certainly understand the fiscal piece of it, and I think there's reasonable arguments on, on the other side of it as well.
Anybody else?
Jeff, Austin.
Jeff?
Yeah, I guess just to follow up on that, Jason, I agree with you to a certain point. But if we were like many other communities in this area and our utility did not charge us this fee, we wouldn't have to pass it on to our, our citizens like this. I prefer to do it that way, but I guess it's just kind of a backdoor way of not raising the tax levy and still collecting the money.
Anybody else? Joyce, you got your hand? Nope. Okay, if there's no, nothing else, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
I'm sorry? Nay. Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one, Your Honor.
And 11B, we need an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Nay.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Since the ordinance did not pass unanimously, it fails six to one. We'll hold it over to the next meeting for the second reading.
And six to one, we'll pass it at that one, right?
Correct. Only a majority needed on the second reading.
Okay, thank you. Uh, 12 is a motion approving the sale of manhole castings. Stephen, I'm kind of interested in this one.
Yep, it's pretty straightforward. Just, uh, we have used and broken manhole castings and this is, uh, in excess of our ordinance. So we would like to, permission to sell them or recycle them with, uh, Watson Recycling here in Austin.
What do we normally get for a manhole cover? That's what we're talking about, right?
Correct.
Pardon? We usually don't sell them?
Well, these are just used ones and broken ones, old ones that are fifty, sixty years old that have come off from our street reconstruction projects that we don't want to use anymore. We've changed standards, things like that. So these are just old ones that we want to recycle and get rid of.
So they're scrap metal? That we just scrap them out?
Correct.
Okay, uh, anybody else have a question or comment? If not, we need a motion for 12.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution approving an engineering services contract with SEH Inc. for a letter of map revision. Stephen?
Part of the benefits of the North Main Flood Control Project is the opportunity to remove protected properties from the flood plain and therefore have the opportunity to reduce or even eliminate their flood insurance requirements. That was a, a big selling point that we advertised and promoted as part of our North Main Flood Mitigation Projects. And we have completed that with, uh, majority of the phases that were, uh, constructed on North Main. We did a letter of map revision for, um, all of the properties along North Main Street from the pool going north to, uh, I-90 and also coming back on the east side of the road with Keen Motors. This last one before you tonight is the last phase, the phase one project that we completed, um, around the rec center. And what, what makes this unique is that, uh, and, and up, we really want council to consider and, and review the need for this is that the, the flood plain boundary, um, was located, was jutted into the property in a, in a very low area, right by the library. Um, much of that area with the redevelopment from the old Austin Utilities to now the rec center, that area has been filled. It's been brought up to grade, um, and, and with the levy in place, uh, does not have, um, an impact from flooding. But also the way the, the property is currently being used, the building does not encroach into the flood plain. So there's, it's a little unique as to why we would be doing this letter of map revision for this property. But I, I would, I would recommend, uh, moving forward with this letter of map revision at this time because it, we, we have the dollars available with our local option sales tax. Uh, five, 10 years down the road, if this property wanted to be used in a different manner or there wanted to be some building put in that northerly side by the library, that wouldn't be possible because of the flood plain boundary. Um, so it, it would allow us, it would allow the future users to, to better use the property. And it's something that, uh, this would be a, a planning tool or a way to plan for the future and, and have the property removed from the flood plain. So for those reasons, uh, I would recommend moving forward with this, uh, project now to remove the property around phase one or the rec center from the flood, flood plain through this letter of, of map revision. And, uh, it has a cost of $96,110 that we would, uh, use to hire SEH as a consultant to complete all the necessary documents through FEMA and approvals to the DNR. This is about a one-year process to do this and all the funds would be paid for out of our local option sales tax.
Counsel, do we have any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for 13.
So moved.
There is, there, Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. We need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 15 is a resolution authorizing a garage to be built on the Community Recreation Center property. Kevin?
As noted in the, in the cover letter, the, the rec center staff is looking for a place to house their garden tractors, snow blower and similar equipment for grounds maintenance.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Where is the garage going to be placed on their property?
Between the water tank and the building. It's partially on utilities grounds.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, we need a resolution for 15.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
16 is a motion, thank you. This 16 is a motion reviewing a variance request from Mint Solar on behalf of Arlo and Beth Drees. Holly?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh, before we get started, I understand that, um, there are some neighbors, um, on the Zoom call that want to speak to this matter. Um, there are six, uh, neighbors that live east of the Drees property. Um, and I believe Amanda Green would speak on their behalf and when I'm, when I'm done, uh, presenting my part, I'll, I'll leave it up to you to, to go, uh, further into that. And then I believe, um, the Drees are, are participating via Zoom as well and, and possibly their, um, Mint Solar representative. Um, at the November 10th, 2020 meeting of the Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a request from Mint Solar on behalf of Arlo and Beth Drees uh, for a variance from the requirements of our code 11.01 subdivision one regulating square footage of accessory structures. Um, the petitioners own a parcel that's about fourteen and a half acres. It's in northwest Austin. Um, there are several detached structures on the property. It was previously, uh, used, uh, agriculturally. Um, and the petitioner currently uses it as a more rural property. The petitioner wishes to add, uh, four solar panels that cover about 2,500 square feet. Um, in addition to the existing, should say existing, it says assisting in your document. But in addition to the existing detached structures, the total square footage of the accessory structures is 4,700 square feet. Um, this property is Zoned R1, single-family residential. Um, so the allowed square footage for lots over one acre is 1,584 square feet. The petitioner would exceed the square footage allowance by over 3,000 square feet. Um, even if you didn't include the existing, uh, accessory structures, it would be close to 1,000 square feet, um, in excess of what's allowed. I should say the, uh, the solar arrays. The petitioner's lot coverage would be less than the allowed coverage of 40%, um, just given that it's such a large parcel. Um, after reviewing the planning commission with five members present, recommended approving the variance, uh, four to one, four in favor and one against. The recommendation, uh, so this is a variance. So in order to analyze, uh, whether a variance should be granted, Minnesota statute applies the following conditions. That the requested variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. That the variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated. And that there is circumstances unique to the property not traded by the landowner. And that the landowner intends to use the land in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the ordinance. So these are the factors that the planning commission, uh, took into consideration, uh, when they reviewed this request. Uh, the commissioner's considered, uh, primarily that first solar is allowed in single-family zoning districts. Um, they looked at the size and location of the parcel. They reviewed the visual impact, um, and size of the proposed structures. And they reviewed the feasibility of alternative locations. Uh, the contractor and Drees appeared in support, uh, of the variance request. And the residents of the six neighboring properties to the east appeared in opposition. Um, the, uh, neighbor to the west and the neighbor to the south did not respond.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, Steve, is that a hand or a foot? I can't tell. Steve King?
Uh, that's my hand. I can show you my foot though, but that flexible.
No, keep your finger on.
In my, Holly, in the background material, it, and maybe what you, you said, did I hear it right? That the normal city code allows for a thousand square foot of solar panels on a city lot. They're making an exception because of the 14 acres they have out there. But that's, that's what we're doing is making an exception for this.
Yes, this would be a variance, um, from our, our statutory, our ordinance requirement of, uh, 1,584 square feet because their, their property is actually over an acre. So 1,584 square feet is the allowed, um, square foot coverage for accessory structures.
Right.
Um, what they have just in solar panels is about 2,500 square feet. Of course, they also have existing accessory structures too, so they're, you know, over that amount. So they would need a variance in order to be able to, uh, go forward with this project.
So I, I did have one of the neighbors stop and talk to me and maybe they talked to their council folks, but, uh, this particular individual was, was, uh, saying, and I could see on the, the drone area mapping or camera photos, that they're going to be, you know, put upon with this, with a view that's going to change for them. And when the property is so large, 14 acres, couldn't they move it somewhere else that is, is not as, in the sightline of a neighbor? And, and I, when I was talking to this gentleman, I didn't realize that we made the exception or the, the planning commission was making an exception for the square footage. So I, in my simple brain, I, I think, well, if we're going to make an exception, shouldn't there be some kind of adjustment made, uh, in light of the neighbors? Otherwise, why would we, I would just say, you know what, it's 5,000 square feet, that's our allowance, we should stick with that. If they want more arrays, uh, then they should maybe position them, uh, somewhere differently on that 14 acre parcel that wouldn't impact neighborhood. Because I could, I think I can make an argument on one of your, uh, issues to, to go against this would be that I think it does change the, the look or feel of the neighborhood uh, by having that next door. I can feel for him. So again, I'm, without hearing the, the neighbor and without hearing from the Drees, uh, my, my brain immediately goes to, if we're going to make those exceptions, um, then there should be some accommodations made to, you know, kind of prevent that being a permanent view of the neighbors.
Yeah, when it, uh, so with regards to variances, um, the council could just grant the variance, they could deny the variance or they can grant the variance with conditions.
Let's hear what the neighbors and, and the, the, uh, people have, we have people here that want to address this. Is there anybody here present that wants to address this issue? I think you're the, are you the, you're the?
Yes, I'm up here.
All right, come on up, you, up to the podium here. Give us your name, your address and tell us what your, are you the homeowner?
Yes, I'm the homeowner. First to Councilman King's point about relocating it. I've talked to two different solar companies and this is the, the property to the east side of my house is the only place on my property that I can put solar. Um, the back part is too far away from the electric. To run the lines that far. And the other side, the trees are too high to the west and there's a gully running through the pasture where everything from County Road 47 drains through that pasture. I did have, have a meeting with the neighbors. I invited them all, asked them what we can do to help them. They basically told me, nothing I can do as long as I'm having it on the east side of my property. I offered to put in more vegetated shrubbery. I offered to move it back. We revised the proposal to move it back as far as we could, which comes at an expense to me. I offered to put in more shrubbery and like I said, they denied it. I still plan on going through with that. I have pictures of the neighborhood. And fall's not a real good time because there's no leaves on the trees. But that's a picture from where the solar panels would be put. You have a large amount of trees between us and as, the fence is four foot high, that would be between us. It would be a lot closer to my house than it is to any neighbors. I mean, it's over 200, uh, over 300 feet, over a football field from any of the neighbors. Um, it's going to be within 30 feet of, actually less than that, probably about 15, 20 feet from my house. I'll be able to see it from my back windows. Every time I'm out in the garden or outside working with the animals, I'll be able to see it. So, you know, they, I feel that this is a great project for the community, for, for the environment, for the entire, basically world. It, it helps the environment so much. I would hate to see it canceled because of supposed view restrictions. I'm, the panels are nine feet tall, less, nine and a half feet tall, less than a basketball hoop. You'd be able to see on the garage. You'd be able to see my garage, you know, I got windows on that side of my garage. You'd be able to see most of, part from about the top of the windows on up. It blocks a view of my property. Blocks a view of my garage, my barn, my garden and my fence, the other side of my fence. The fence would remain, it would help block the view. I tried to work with the neighbors. They are very resistant. Like I said, they don't want it anywhere to the east of my house and that's the only place I can put it.
Okay, and, and we, we have neighbors or other people here that wish We have neighbors or other people here that wish to... Amanda Dries? Amanda Green, are you up there?
I am, good evening.
Okay, let's, let's hear you. I mean, go ahead.
Sure. So on be, on behalf of our neighboring properties, thank you for the opportunity to voice our concerns and objection to the proposal this evening. Holly shared a lot of the technical information, and hope we've had a chance to review the October, November planning commission meetings. Given all that information, there are two main points that we urge you to consider when making a decision about this proposal. The first being the size, and the second being the precedent. First, this proposal clearly does not fall within the guidelines and ordinance set by the city. These solar panel structures would be so large that, as Holly mentioned, if the other accessory structures on the property were taken down, these solar panels themselves would still be more than nine hundred square feet over the detached accessory structure square foot limitation. It's been clear that this isn't about solar energy as much as it is about a revenue source for the homeowners and the conversations we've had with them and the representative, as these panels would produce much more energy than the homeowners use. If this were truly just about renewable energy, which none of the neighbors object to, a panel of much less size would be what was requested today. But again, it's been stated that the size being requested is so large for them to sell energy back for financial gain. I'd like to point out the difference in size between this proposal and the proposal that was brought forward to you and approved at the October nineteenth city council meeting. The proposal that was approved at the October meeting was for four hundred and twenty-five square feet of solar panels. The proposal this evening is for two thousand five hundred and thirty square feet, approximately six times larger than what was approved last month, and that total square feet of variance requested is five to six times larger as well. I realize the proposal at hand is on a much larger property than the October proposal was. However, that truly should not be a factor when the proposed placements of these panels is right on the edge of the property, directly across the street from all the neighboring homes, not out in the other fourteen acres. That's fundamental. Size and technical logistics aside, for my family personally, our concern is what sort of precedence will be set if this proposal is approved. Our neighborhood was annexed into the city in two thousand and fifteen, after several years of hearing it would be happening soon. In fact, when we purchased our home in two thousand and fourteen, before we had even closed on the property, we started receiving notices and had the opportunity to attend meetings about the annexation. I bring this up because the Dries purchased their home after that in two thousand and fifteen, so we're well aware that we are part of the city, and there are ordinances and guidelines that need to be followed. Yes, we are a very unique rural residential area, which I would say is a large reason many of us choose to live out here, however, we are now part of the city. This proposal isn't a slight variance to the ordinance. We're talking about a mini solar panel farm in the front side of a yard within the city of Austin, near the road and directly across from several neighboring homes. We urge the council to consider the precedence that is being set with this proposal. If this disregard for the city ordinance is approved, what should we expect next in our unique neighborhood? If the homeowners have additional requests to expand their solar farm or add additional structures or animals to their farm-like property, will the city be able to deny those requests if they've approved this one? What happens when one of the other neighboring properties turns over? The new owners move in and see they have to look across the street at large structures and solar panels. What's to stop them from wanting to add half an acre of solar panels in their front or side yard, as we all have the land and space to do that? And how would the city justify denying that variance request if you approve the one this evening? We know that this property and our area in general are unique, and unlike majority properties within the city of Austin, however, the city opted to annex us in regardless. We already face the disadvantage of paying city taxes without receiving full city services, such as water and a paved maintained road. Uniqueness of our properties shouldn't be a factor when deciding whether ordinances need to be followed or what degree of variance is acceptable. At the end of the day, we are part of the city of Austin now. Again, the proposal at hand is much larger than a request for a panel that's in alignment with energy output for just the needs of this home. We urge you not to set a precedent that subjects the future of our neighborhood to the unknown if we can't depend on the city to follow the guidelines and ordinances, or to approve variances only within a reasonable manner, which is not the case given this proposed size of the request. So on behalf of our neighboring properties along Fifth Avenue Northwest, we thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council? Give us your name and your address. Wait a minute, we got, we got one present, just stopped walking up to the podium. Who else was, was that Jeff?
Paul from Min Solar.
All right, go ahead.
So I'm the solar contractor. I build solar all over the state of Minnesota and, and even neighboring states. You know, first off, I don't know, you know, why people would think that the solar panels are unattractive to look at. I mean, they are, the, the systems I build are, are nice and straight, and the panels are black, sleek, attractive looking. You know, the, the neighbors are to the east side of the solar panels, and, which is the end of the solar panels, so they don't really actually see that much of the solar arrays sitting there. The proposed site is situated in the, in the only practical place on the Dries property for solar production. The, the layout that I have, I kind of consider it a postage stamp layout, is, is out of all the systems I build, the least noticeable in size, being that it's kind of square. You know, I, I brought up to the neighbors when we met that it could be feasible to build a long row of them on the back fence line of the property, but, but a layout like that would actually be much larger looking to the neighborhood. And I, and I don't think it's desirable layout then, you know, because of that. But besides moving them back there is problematic due to the length of power distance to the transformer, the Austin Utilities Transformer. So, so from the original design, we, we, at the second planning and zoning, we, we moved the array north about thirty-five feet, so that two of the rows would be directly behind the close neighbors' steel shed there. So that shed would, would block two of the arrays view to these neighbors to the east. It would push the, push it back farther from the front of the street, and then there would only be two rows that are in front of the shed. And there's about twenty-five feet between the rows, so that, that's still wide open, and the neighbors would see right down that green space. So it's, it's not that disruptive to their view. I mean, ultimately, you know, I feel that the Dries family, you know, bought a fifteen acre property for the ability to use it to the best of their family needs. And the Dries family believes in solar power. If this was just a few years ago, and the property was still under the Mauer County zoning, there would be no public hearing and only a simple permit fee required. Most citizens look to solar as an environment. And feel it as something that local and state governments should look to propose. At the national level, the Democratic Party is pushing legislature that would require millions, millions of homes across the country to be powered to solar power. That's soon on the horizon here. Most importantly, I think, you know, is that, you know, no neighbors, none of these neighbors have a patio or deck that, that directly looks towards the direction of the Dries property. The Dries closest neighbor has a patio.
You're breaking up, sir. You're not talking into your mic on your thing. You can hardly hear you.
Okay, is that better?
That's better.
So I was saying, most importantly, the, the neighbors' patios and decks face the opposite direction of the Dries. They don't look towards that direction. The, the closest neighbor to the Dries has their patio to the north of their home, you know, the opposite direction as well. I have built these ground-mounted solar arrays in towns all across the state. I recently built one, a ground-mounted system, similar property in the city limits of Winona. You know, I built about five of these in the heart of the Twin Cities even now.
Well, sir, we gotta move on. We're talking about Austin. Is there anything else you wish to say?
Nope, I was finished, but it, it's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Scott Kaplan. I'm at thirty-seven oh five Fifth Avenue Northwest. I have one of the six homes that are in that area that are not happy about this situation. Holly Wallace gave us a map of what their proposed array is. And yes, it's twenty-five hundred square foot of solar panels, but if you do the math on the entire plot, that turns out to be, if you take the one, the second one they offered, that's over sixty-three hundred square foot of area that that thing sits on. That's three of our homes in one area. Yes, the panels themselves. We, who puts their patios, the last point you made, who puts their patios in their front yard? People put their patios in their backyard. We don't have patios in our front yard. We all sit in a semicircle looking at this array. We're in the end of a cul-de-sac, we all wrap around there, and it's all visible. This property was, was put in, purchased by the Dries after it was in the city of. It had already been grandfathered in. They have already put an addition on their barn. I hope they got a permit for that, but that's an additional variance, I would assume, on this property. Now we have another one that they're asking for. Where does this stop? I don't want to go over the stuff that Amanda covered, but this thing is way oversized. It's a commercial producing product. They don't need that big a thing to take care of the electricity for their home. If you have any questions from, for us, to me, I'd gladly entertain it. But this is an eyesore for us in terms of, yes, panels are clean and neat. We're living in a country, we like to look at animals and deer, you know, and the trees and, and that type of thing. That's why we're in the country. Anybody have any questions for me?
Counsel have any questions? Okay, anybody else wish to address the council on this?
Can we show a picture of the area?
Well, we have, we have, the council has it in their package. I got it right here on my thing.
I have a ground level picture showing the houses from, from where we're putting it.
You're gonna, you have a piece of paper?
My wife can pull it up on Zoom.
Okay, put it up on here, on Zoom. Where's your wife? Okay, I can't read that far. She's not on there?
Beth, can you put the photo up for us? Beth Dries.
Beth Dries, are you there, Beth? Beth?
Beth, you have to share your own screen.
I can't hear her.
Hello, this is Beth Dries.
Of course.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can't hear anybody.
Screen share is disabled for me. I cannot share pictures unless you can enable screen sharing.
Okay, we're working on it. Please give us a second.
Great.
We've got a pretty good idea, I think, of where they're gonna go and what it's gonna go.
Can I get a couple of clarifications in the meantime while you're doing that?
What's that? Craig, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to get a couple of clarifications in the meantime. Can you hear me?
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I think it was Amanda mentioned that there was a different size, I think only like four hundred or something square feet approved at the planning and zoning, and now we're asking for the two thousand or twenty-five hundred, whatever it is. Is that correct?
I think what Amanda was referencing was a prior variance request that was heard at the previous council meeting for Mark Schaefer, I think it was Schaefer. He had one solar panel installed. So the, the request at council today is the same as what the planning commission had approved.
Okay. And then the owner, or the people that want the Dries, mentioned that they could put up shrubbery, but from what I understood in, in one of the letters was that shrubbery hinders the solar panels, so I'm, can somebody clarify that?
Paul from Min Solar can probably clarify, is my understanding that, you know, kind of depended on how the, the vegetation was, you know, I guess planted and what, what variety and, I guess that kind of thing. Are you still on, Paul?
Yes. Yes, um, yes, there's, you could plant shrubbery on the side. Right now, there is some trees that, they're kind of scrubby trees that exist there that would block higher up, and you could have other, like Arbovita shrubbery and stuff like that that could be planted on the side.
Okay, are we gonna get...
Yeah, and I think what the neighbors were saying is just that it takes some time for that, you know, that vegetation to create a screen was their concern. And, and the neighbors can speak for themselves, but I, I understood that was a, a potential concern.
Are we gonna get these pictures?
Lastly, I just, I guess I'm a little concerned about the size that they are asking for. It does seem commercial to me, instead of like a personal use, so if the owners can maybe explain what their plans are for this?
Sir, go ahead, Mr. Dries?
Yes, the size of the unit is more than we use for electricity. It's almost double. We plant, but it would all, but I, it would kind of net zero our financial equipment to the, financial commitment to the city. It would cover our natural gas, our sewers, et cetera, et cetera, so that we're shooting for a net zero in our financial commitment to the city.
Okay, but my understanding there, that somebody had asked that there was a compromise, you could move them back, and that was done, but then they got bigger. Is that correct?
No, it's the same size.
Craig?
Mr. Dries, just for clarification sake, just so we're clear, if council denies the variance, then there's no project whatsoever. So in earlier presentation, you said that it wasn't possible to move it to another location. You mentioned a swale and trees and that. And then your consultant said it was problematic, is what he called it. Is it your, your opinion is it can't be anywhere else? Because i- if there's another area that's more palatable to the neighbors, you could still have your project approved. If council sees it as not being able to be accommodated and denied, then you have no project. So I just wanted to be clear, there is no other area on your property. It might be more costly and, and those sorts of things, but could you clarify that it is, it can only go in this area?
It would be cost prohibitive for me.
Okay, so it's not that it couldn't, it's that it would be...
I said, I said that it could be moved back about thirty, forty more feet and run down the length of the fence on the property there, but then it would be in just one single row, which would, you know, it would be the same square footage, but it would appear to be larger because it's one long row.
Okay, sir, did you have...
And so it's possible to have it in that spot, except it's still problematic because it's farther than we typically allow to get the power to the transformer.
And also it creates issues with my livestock if I put it back there. I mean, it's, to me, it's not feasible.
Okay, so you're content with, if it's turned down, there wasn't another suitable place?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Beth, if you have those photos, it should be good now to share.
Okay, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this issue?
Scott Kaplan again. As I looked at that property, and I actually put a bubble on the fence, a four-foot level, and shot across there, that property drops on the east side about four feet in the front. And you go to the back of that thing, it drops about eight feet. This Min Solar gentleman on the phone with Holly Wallace and I the other day, said that he can move, adjust that panel about two feet. So how do you set those panels up without them sticking up above the four-foot fence? You're looking at it already at ten feet high, so we're looking at six feet above the fence. And then if he's gonna have to raise it to be somewhat level, I don't know how he does it, but that's gonna stick up if you're anywhere near bubble level. it, but that's gonna stick up if you're anywhere near bubble level. As I said, in the back, the property considerably drops off towards the east, towards our homes. And at best in the front, it's got a four to five foot drop. The math doesn't work there for it, so.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to address the council on this? We?
Can I explain the photo?
Okay.
So, in this photo, this would be the south.
So in this photo, this would be the south edge of the solar panel, that's looking at the neighbors' houses. Despite what Scott said, the panels, you have it in your documentation that the panels will be nine and a half feet tall above the ground level. They won't be 12 feet high, like council, like Jay, if you watched the video from the planning committee, Jay Lutz said he was out there, he looked at it and said the height of the panels would come about even with the garage windows on my garage house, on my garage that faces that. As you can see, there's already lots of trees there, there's some evergreens, there's, you see more of the houses now because of the leaves aren't on the trees.
Sorry, we are talking to the mic.
Sorry, you can see more of the houses now than you can during the summer when they'd be out because there's no leaves on the trees. The shrubbery would be on the, along the fence, it would not impact the solar because the solar's coming from the south, and the shrubbery would be to the east. This is the other picture from showing, that's the neighbor's shed there. As you can see, the houses back at that area, there's lots of trees there too, so that we're not, there's already vegetation there to help block the view. And this is just a picture of that, the road going down to the cul-de-sac, showing all those trees and existing shrubs that, that would help block the view. And like I said, we're willing to put in more vegetation, screenage on the east side. We've moved it back as, basically as far as we can.
Okay.
We've tried to compromise.
All right, we need, we need to move this along. Council, do you have any questions? Is there anybody else who wants to address us, the council that has not done so yet?
This is Laura Helly, I have a question, when you're ready.
Go ahead.
So my question is to Holly and possibly Mr. Byram. The neighbors are objecting that the size of the array goes beyond what the household needs. Is there any legal concern or prohibition of them generating more electricity as a source of income? You know? I mean, I could grow vegetables on my backyard and sell them at the farmer's market, right? More than my family could eat and sell the excess? I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, what the objection is there.
You know, I did talk to, or Mr. Byram and I did have a conversation about this, well, via email. I think I might let him tackle it.
Mr. Byram?
Yeah, so, it normally, and in most cases, would have little to nothing to do with a variance, so I agree with Councilmember Helly's comment, and in a lot of places, things are allowed where you produce excess. The, the only perhaps connection is that economic issues are not supposed to be the reason that you decide a variance is appropriate or not appropriate. In prior testimony at the, at the planning commission level, it was stated by the, the solar array installer, that many times you oversize because over the life of the array you lose productivity due to the degradation of the panels. It was also presented that there is a certain federal grant or tax credit or some other sort of financial incentive that's in place right now that requires something to be of this size to qualify. So, there, there are a lot of financial reasons for why the size of this array has been chosen, but again, back to the standard for granting variance, economic considerations are not what you should be considering either for or against it. It's clear that for most solar array installations, one of the things that an owner considers is whether they can either reduce or eliminate their own electric bill by selling the excess power to the utility, but that may be a justification for Mr. Dries on what he's trying to do, but should not really play into your decision on whether a variance is in place. The considerations for the variance are what Holly has articulated, that there's something unique about the property that makes reasonable use not possible, and, and the, the other factors that she has listed out in the backup materials. Those are the standards for either granting or denying a variance. I don't speak for the planning commission, but I believe that they felt that the very large parcel size was to some degree relevant to their consideration in this particular case, that the rule that would generally limit accessory structures was drafted or intended for much smaller parcels. That was their thinking.
And I would just add, just to clarify for everyone, even if the council said, you know, we'll grant this variance if you do one panel or two panels, I mean, they still need a variance even if they had one panel, because they already have exceeded the allowed square footage for accessory structures with their existing accessories.
Okay.
Okay, so, to make sure I understood what you were saying about the financial considerations, we shouldn't be considering whether or not the property owners will make money or lose money with this request, but we also don't need to consider any legal impacts of, of if they are generating income from the solar panels. That's, that's not, there are no legal concerns about that being like a business in a residential or anything like that.
Yeah, that's.
So it's essentially a non-issue.
Right, that, that is all correct, and in fact, you know, there's lots of laws in place that when you install alternative energy, you, you are able to sell that, and that utilities are required to buy that. We don't consider that to be a business use or, or some other sort of violation of the zoning code. It should be a non-issue. It, it's a big motivator for the applicant tonight, but should not be a big motivator for the decision, either for or against.
Thank you.
Council, anybody else have a question or a comment? If not, we need to address this issue with a motion, or what are we looking at?
A motion of some sort, Your Honor.
A motion of some sort. I mean, the planning commission has approved it, will we?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick, I'm gonna kick it off here, Mayor Steem. You know, again, I, I don't know that I, Holly says it's a variance no matter what size, but I understand it to be kind of a, I know it's gonna be, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't, that size of a planned array field doesn't fit that neighborhood to me. And I get there's acreages, but I, I need to honor the, all the negative comments from the, from the neighbors, and I would certainly support a 1,500, you know, normal ordinance, 1,500 square foot solar array, downsize that, and if, if they, again, that's my motion, is that we allow a 1,500-foot solar array just to take into accommodations the neighbors, and also give the Dries some solar activity, but I do believe that if we're gonna allow a variance to be that, that big when we have so many dissenting neighbors, I don't know why we would really honor that. So I, my motion is to go 1,500 square feet.
Did you have a comment?
Mr. Byram, the request is for this solar array, not for 1,500 square feet, so don't they have to either approve or deny the request as requested? Well, my general advice on modifying variances when they come in is that if you go smaller and less objectionable, you're probably all right legally. Going larger would require resetting, re-notifying, making sure the neighbors realized the larger problem. In this context, my bigger concern is, I believe Mr. Dries and his, his solar representative, Paul Kreiderman, have stated before that this size is the only thing that they're interested in, so it would be a question really of the applicant whether they were interested in any value. Which falls on Mr. Clark's question, which it's either this or nothing, and I believe Mr. Dries.
So, we either approve or deny. Is that correct, Mr. Byram, right now? And then if we deny, they can come back with another proposal?
They could.
But Steve, yours would make it smaller, right, Mr. King? And, I mean, can we?
I suppose we could always take a vote if you want.
Yeah, is there, all right, is there a second to Steve? Read the ordinance together, the proposal, Tom.
Councilmember King has requested a motion to approve up to 1,500 square foot of solar panels.
Is there a second to that?
Solar panels are variance.
Well?
Same thing.
Well, he's already got accessory structures on the property.
He's gonna need more than that for his variance then, because he's got in excess of the allowed number already, so the variance would have to be more than the 1,500 for the, the solar panels, it would have to be plus the excess of structures already, which is 3,800, so you're still looking at a larger variance.
So basically, an additional variance, a 1,500 square feet of solar panels is what you're saying?
Yeah, I would say that seems to be correct.
Yes.
Okay, motion by Councilmember King for 1,500, a variance of up to 1,500 square foot of solar panels. So I have a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Hi.
Fisher.
Hi.
Baskin.
Hi.
Helly.
I'm gonna vote nay, and I, I just wanna say that it's because as a former member of the planning commission, I'm not sure that a number of neighbors objecting to a variance is equal in weight to the decision of those people on the planning commission who are neutral and who studied the issue and look at issues like this all day long, so I, I vote nay. I would have rather upheld the planning commission's decision.
Councilmember Waller.
Reasonable people can disagree.
Councilmember Waller.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Councilmember Large Austin.
I'm gonna vote nay, just because, I mean, looking at this, Mr. Dries knew when he came into the, when he bought the property that it was in the city, and I know that when we looked at annexing this property, we looked at possible more development out there, and I just think that's gonna either probably hinder that or cause bigger problems down the road, so I would vote nay.
Motion passes 5-2, so up to 1,500 square foot is being, of solar panels is being approved.
Do you understand that, Mr. Dries?
Yes.
Okay, everybody understand that? Okay, I'm not sure I do, but let's move forward. Okay, thank you, everybody, and thank people for, for speaking up and people that came in. Number 16 is a motion. Okay, number 17 is three motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 1206 12th Avenue Southwest, the bus-ded property. We need a motion.
So will I.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Hi.
Fisher.
Hi.
Baskin.
Hi.
Helly.
Hi.
Waller.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
B 507 13 Avenue Southeast, the Vargas property, need a motion.
So will I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Hi.
Fisher.
Hi.
Baskin.
Hi.
Helly.
Hi.
Waller.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
And finally, C 503 8th Avenue Southeast, the Wakefield property, need a motion?
So will I.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Hi.
Fisher.
Hi.
Baskin.
Hi.
Helly.
Hi.
Waller.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 18 is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Leaning Tree LLC. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. We have an offer for property that's by 11th Street Northeast, 16th and 17th Avenue Northeast. Been offered amount of $77,000. This is the former Crane Park. The park board has, has approved the sale of this property. It wasn't as a dedicated park. Currently, it's open green space, there's no play equipment. You wouldn't notice it as a park if you went out there today. It would be doing us a favor, so we didn't have to mow and maintain this property. We'd suggest sale and approval to Leaning Tree, and a supermajority is required by council to approve the sale.
Council, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just earlier, when we talked about, when we went through the budgeting process and we talked about possibly selling parkland, I thought Mr. Nelson mentioned that there was an extensive process to go through. Is that the case, or is this just because of this particular property that all we need is the supermajority?
Yeah, and talking with Attorney Byram in this case, all we need is a supermajority vote of council.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we need a resolution for 18.
So will I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Hi.
Fisher.
Hi.
Baskin.
Hi.
Helly.
Hi.
Waller.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Hi.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're now two citizens addressing the council. Anybody here tonight that wish to address the council on any issues? If not, honorary councilmember comments. It's Centino, right?
Was on the call.
Centino, do you have any comments?
No, yeah, I want to say thank you and, and good evening to everybody. Actually, I look like I'm not a lucky guy. This coronavirus, cannot see each other and interact. We just stuck in the computer. I wish it was a normal time so we can be together and get to learn, but it is a very interesting learning process. I'm, I'm happy to be here and learn how things are being debated and move our city forward.
All right.
I want to register my congratulations also to those who win the election. I don't have a lot of contacts with, like Steve, we used to communicate a long time ago, but I lost the contact. I would like to have all this contact again. In a normal time, we can talk, including you, Mayor, also. I lost your number. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, and reports and recommendations. Time, you wanna go around for council?
Councilmember Pashusta.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Fisher.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Baskin.
Just wanted to quickly thank Ann and Cheryl and all the election judges and folks that worked on Election Day a couple of weeks ago. Incredibly smoothly run, and if even somebody like myself can figure out how to not screw it up too bad, well, you guys do a pretty nice job running it.
Councilmember Helly.
I wanna echo Jason's comments. I, I've been saying all fall, how proud I am of our election process in Mauer County and City of Austin, and I continue to feel that way. And I also wanna say congratulations and thank you to everyone who was on the ballot. Not everybody gets the office that they run for, but our system only works if people are willing to, to step up and put their name on the, on the line, and that's a risk. I, I get it, and I salute those people who, who took the risk and were willing to run, and I hope to encourage anybody who has an inkling that maybe public office might be for them to, to step forward and give it a try.
to, to step forward and give it a try.
Thank you, Laura, Tom.
Councilmember Waller.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember King.
Uh, yeah, Moore County has always been traditionally high in the voter turnout, but I saw from Craig's comments that we were at eighty-one percent, gained a thousand more voters, so that's, uh, outstanding that people got out and vote, uh, whether it was early by mail or, or in person the night of, it was certainly a great turnout, and, uh, just again, uh, as I spoke with Jeff earlier, uh, we, we both, I thought, were, uh, ran a clean campaign, if you will, it's different in the pandemic, but, but I know a, a story run by George Malley over in KMT, uh, when he interviewed both of us via Skype, the result of that was, in his words, nothing to see here. Two guys that get along, willing to work with each other, there's no animosity, so there's really no story, but, uh, kudos to Jeff for running, and also for Brian Heimer to make it even a primary. I don't know if, if Austin's ever had a mayor, a race that included a primary, so it's nice to see people wanting to, uh, get out and, uh, and, uh, be active in their community.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Oh, just wait, Steve, the fun will begin after the first of the year. Now, I guess that, one of the comments I heard at the election is that we should do it that way every time, uh, have it at the Holiday Inn, they thought it went so smooth and easy that, uh, they thought that was a pretty, pretty good deal, so I guess that's the only comment I have to pass on at this time.
Mayor Steem.
I don't have anything, just I wanna thank the election workers, I, I think Anne did a good job, I know the county, we had some problems there, but it was the first time with the program, and, uh, Scott Felton's first time, so we, we thank them all for the hard work, and the citizens for getting out and voting, it was really a good election. Hopefully, we can, uh, keep this up. Craig, do you have anything?
Uh, the only item that I have is the Small Business Assistance Program, we, um, are rounding out the Phase Two of that. It looks like we'll have about thirty-one thousand of, uh, uh, grant assistance to send out to four businesses, um, so that should close that out, we still have a few things to, to work through with a few of them, but, uh, that program's, seems like it's done its, uh, intended goal, and, uh, we'll close that out, um, moving forward. I just wanted to give council an update on that program, that's all I have.
No reports?
I don't know of any other reports.
All right, with that, then we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, December seventh, twenty, twenty, at five-thirty in council chambers.
Tell them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Hi.
Fisher. Baskin.
Hi.
Helly.
Hi.
Waller.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Hi.
Motion passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Take a five-to-ten-minute break.